Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Williamson County School Board for the June 20th edition. And if, Board members, if you all would please record your attendance. Okay. All right, then if you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Deputy Brian Dobbs, who's with us this evening, and then remain standing for a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, the first item is the approval of the agenda. We have a motion for the approval of the agenda. You have a motion for approval for Mr. Hullett?
Second.
Second. And Ms. McGraw. Any discussions, questions, statements on this? Okay. Do we just do voice vote on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Before you do, Mr. Chair, if you're approving the, if you're approving the MOU.
Okay. Board members, you do realize that we're going to, when we approve the agenda, we're approving the consent agenda as well at that time. Okay, I have to make a statement on this. I'm sorry, Mr. Wimberley's first.
Yes, Mr. Chair, in voting for approval of the PECMA-
A memorandum of understanding. I have a relative employed by the school system. I certify that my vote about to be cast on that matter is in the best interest of the school system.
Thank you. Mr. Hullett?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, thank you. I too, in voting for approval of the PECMA memorandum of understanding, have a relative employed by the school system, and I certify that my vote about to be cast on the matter is in the best interest of the school system.
Thank you, sir. I too have, in voting for an approval of the PECMA memorandum of understanding, I have a relative employed by the school system, and I certify that my vote about to be cast on the matter is in the best interest of the school system. Anyone else need to say anything at this time? Okay, then we have a motion, and we have a second for the approval of the agenda. We do a voice vote again, please. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? I see none. When we approve the agenda, we approve the consent agenda, and with that, we approve the school board meeting minutes from May 16th. We approve board polishes on second reading, 4.6041 testing for credit, 4.6051 credit requirements for graduation. We approve the recommendations for field trip fee requests. We approve the PECMA memorandum of understanding. We approve an All Saints Presbyterian Church lease agreement. The next item is items of particular public interest, which is our public comment time. We have two speakers requesting to speak this evening. The first one is Daniela Kuntz. If you'd please come to the mic.
Good evening. My name is Daniela Kuntz. I live at 132 Cavalry Drive, Franklin, Tennessee, 37064. Dear Chairman, school board members, and educators, I want to acknowledge and thank all of you for the improvements for the safety of the indoor air and learning space for our students. I am very aware that it is challenging to manage a school district and issues that can arise. I appreciate all the good things being done for our students and teachers and for all of your precious time invested. A heartfelt thank you. The school district has bought two expensive new fans, which can help dissipate paint fumes and other remodeling job fumes to make indoor air safer to breathe for students and teachers. Anything which will ensure that our children's health is protected, and also teachers, is greatly appreciated by all parents. Thank you for this addition. My question is, will paint jobs and other indoor air polluting works still be performed when students are in school? Parents were questioning the efficacy of the new policies for safety standards inside schools, 3.2017 and 3.2019 policy, which were passed last year, especially parents who have kids with asthma and other conditions. Parents are still waiting for all requested safety policies to be adopted, which were sent in on February 16. We all are counting on school board members and our superintendent to help and honor these requests. We don't want to sound ungrateful. We see that you do care, and we are thankful for that. More actions are needed, though. I was told to savor the victories for passing the two policies last year and for the improvements. Let me clarify, this is not about me. All this is for the students' health and safety and to the benefit also of teachers in our schools. We, as a community, can only win from it all, and it is a fundamental need and not a want. Any guidelines printed on a paper will not do any good if it is not being applied. Intentions do not bring the change needed, actions do. There is no excuse for skimping on students' health and safety. Fully committing to this important aspect and being resourceful is needed. We are here to help as a support team and as the parents of our children. We are supposed to come together for the benefit of our students. Thank you for stepping up and for doing what we request for the health of our students. Let's do this.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Audrey Buffington.
Good evening. I'm Audrey Buffington, 4:30, Lena Lane Franklin. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, employees of the Williamson County Schools, and guests, this is a very unusual presentation this evening because I got a call in the middle of the afternoon asking if I were coming, and because of the timeliness of this, would I please read this resolution? I have copies that I will give to each of you at the end of my reading of the resolution, and then I will make no more comments because I know nothing about it other than I'm the messenger and I'm reading this. A resolution of the Williamson County Schools Board of Education to censure District 12 Board members, Robert Hullett, Anne McGraw, Rick Wimberley, and Gary Anderson. Whereas the Williamson County Schools Board of Education is deeply committed to the effective operation of the Williamson County School District in order to provide governance and leadership for the district, and whereas the Williamson County Schools Board of Education needs all 12 members to contribute to a positive working environment for the superintendent and for colleagues on the board, and whereas the Williamson County Schools Board of Education is deeply committed to upholding policies providing for open, honest, and respectful communication, adherence to state law and policies governing the board's actions and behaviors, and to acting in a concerted fashion to set an example of positive leadership for the Williamson County Schools District, and whereas the Williamson County School Board of Education has established and annually adopted a code of ethics for the board, and whereas the constituents of Williamson County have reason to believe that certain sections of the code of ethics have been violated by the school board members listed above, and whereas evidence has been produced that on Sunday, June 19th, 2016, Board Member Robert Hullett posted on his social media Facebook page that he is honored to be a special guest at this for our state representative, Charles Sargent. Charles has my support for his reelection, and I hope you will support him, along with my reelection bid as well, and whereas this statement from Mr. Hullett is in direct violation of the Code of Ethics Article II, Section II, that states, "I will represent at all times the entire school community and refuse to represent special interests or partisan politics." This statement is also in direct violation of Article VI, Section III, that states, "I will refrain from using my position on the board for personal or partisan gain." This statement is also in direct violation of Article II, Section IV, which states, "I will refrain from using resources to actively campaign for any candidate for elected office." And whereas this type of action is something that Mr. Hullett has a history of doing, as he also publicly endorsed Eric Welsh, Vicky Vogt, Pat Anderson, and Melody Morris for school board during the last elections in 2014. He also endorsed Charles Sargent and Cherry Hammond during the 2014 election cycle, and whereas this type of behavior is in direct conflict with the code of ethics that Mr. Hullett signed, and whereas Mr. Hullett should be censored for his actions, and whereas evidence has been produced that reflects that on April 21st, 2016, Board Member Anne McGraw posted on her Twitter account-
Ms. Buffington, Ms. Buffington, your time is up. Can you please wrap this up?
Well, I can't wrap up a resolution that's been written in legal document. I don't know how to do that. I would, I would ask, please, may I finish? It takes a total of about five minutes, and I probably used a minute or a minute and a half.
You've used three minutes, ma'am.
I've used three minutes already?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Jason?
We do have a policy regarding that. It's the chair's discretion. Ms. Buffington says that she has it printed from a, from a public perspective, that document's available. For what it's worth, I will say, you stated that you don't, you're just the messenger, you don't have any knowledge, but if you're making factual statements about individuals, that risk is still there, but that bridge has been crossed. So it's, it's up to the chair under the board policy.
Okay, Ms. Buffington, if you're saying this and you have no personal knowledge of this, yet you're making accusations-
I'm, I'm reading, yes. I'm just, I've been asked to read it so that it would go into the minutes of the board. Apparently didn't have many people who were going to be coming tonight, and I was going to attend.
If you have the document, it, the board accepts those documents routinely, so that document will, it will be part of the record.
So you're saying that I-
I, I think you should go ahead and give us the document. It's part of the, it's part of the board's records then, right, Mr. Golden?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next item is Communications to the Board Superintendent's Report. Dr. Looney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. Good to see you this evening. District is operating as normal. We are in the midst of the hiring season, and we are in the midst of the turnover season, so we're exiting employees that are, seek, or they have acquired employment elsewhere or are relocating, and we're in the midst of building, rebuilding our team. Construction across the district is going well. Our ribbon cuttings are on as scheduled, and you should have an invitation to the superintendent's awards banquet before you tonight, and I hope that you consider coming. With that being said, I'd like to invite Mrs. Carol Birdsong to the forefront. We have a number of students and staff members that we would like to celebrate.
Thank you, Dr. Looney. Good evening, board members. We are actually pretty much celebrating spring fling tonight, and all of our athletes in Williamson County Schools. We brought home about 12 state championships from this, from this past season, and we are going to start with T double S double A state champion Sam Fisher from Brentwood High School. Sam is your boys tennis single champ in Class 3A. His coach is Bill Jane, and, not to be outdone, Summer Henry from Brentwood High School, our girls tennis singles champ in Class 3A. Bill Jane is Summer's coach, and this is actually Summer's second state championship, two in a row for Summer. And then the girls tennis doubles, Class 3A state champions from Brentwood as well, Georgia Fisher and Katie DeWald, Bill Jane again, their coach, and, well, how about the whole girls tennis team from Brentwood High School? They brought home the hardware. Georgia Fisher, Marla Leon, Yi Q, Summer Henry, Katie DeWald, Abby Longhearse, Nikki Christensen, Grace Dodson, and Cassidy Crouch, again, their coach, Bill Jane. Now we'll go to track and field. Brody Hasty, you've seen Brody already this year before, but Brody brought home yet another state championship in the 1600-meter run, Class 3A. His coach is Ronnie Sigenthaler. Also from Brentwood High School, these are your state champions in boys track and field, four by eight hundred meter relay, Max Benson, Scott Thompson, Chase Puskar, and Ryan Lee. Ronnie Sigenthaler, their coach. Over at Centennial High School, this is Jonathan Hilton, boys track and field, 800-meter state champion in Class 3A. Sean Carter is Jonathan's coach. Sean Carter is also Jack Crouch's coach. This is Jack. He won the state championship in Pole Vault, Class 3A. Now, Page High School? No, that is not Page High School. That is Brentwood High School. These are your ladies in girls track and field, four by eight hundred meter relay, Riley Cogan, Casey Baldwin, Emma J., and Haley Henry, and Mary Leitner from Page High School in Pole Vault. This is Mary's second year to win the state championship. Her coaches, Ron Brock and Carrie Fatuzzi. This is Amber Tanner. Amber is from Ravenwood High School, and she won several state championships. The first one is in the pentathlon. Her coach is Peter Mueller. And then Amber won this one last year and won it again this year. This is the 300-meter hurdles. And then your state champions in girls track and field, four by four hundred meter relay, Amber Tanner, Riley White, Grace Parsons, and Addison White. That would be three state championship trophies that Amber brought home. And Pete Mueller, the coach says he wanted you all to know, this team was undefeated and had the fastest time in the state all year. So congratulations to our athletes. We have one student spotlight, one near and dear to my heart. This is Cory Mason in the Communications Department, and Cory in the Communications Department awarded the 2016 National School Public Relations Association Golden Achievement Award for our academic all-star program. So congratulations to all of our students and staff. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that completes my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Looney. On the board chairman's report, I want to welcome Boy Scout Troop 131. Gentlemen, if you'd please stand. Welcome to be here this evening. Thank you. Also, board members, TSBA conference, they're sending out information now. When you get it, please check it and see if you can get those dates clear to be able to attend at least some of the sessions at the TSBA conference this year. Also, the Business Expo is tomorrow at the factory, and it is from, I think it's four to seven PM is the time. So anyone who can make that and support our local businesses with our schools, that would be great. And at your, at your place tonight is the board goals document that we discussed at the work session the other night. If you haven't had a chance to fill it out, you can fill it out and then get it over to Jason. That's all I have to report for this evening. Anyone have any questions? All right, the next item is new business, board policy first reading, 1.800 school calendar. Anyone like to make a motion on this policy on first reading? We have moved for approval from Ms. McGraw and second by Mr. Cash. Any discussion on this one? Ms. McGraw.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I brought forward the suggestion to this policy change, and just want to make clear that while the language in here, I think, is great and accomplishes the goal and the intent of what we're trying to do to solicit community and parent feedback, I don't believe policy should be overly prescriptive in procedures or process, but I did just want to kind of go on record and let everyone know that the intent here is that we engage the community more when we're setting the calendar, and the calendar committee does a great job of getting a lot of representation on that committee, but I felt there was an opportunity, based on what other districts do, to get a little bit more broader input on the various options, based on the very strong opinions that parents and teachers have on the school calendar. So I, this, this wording is great for me, but I do have an expectation that if this passes, that there will be a broad-based solicitation of community and parent input and not just a single source of representation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Galbert?
So I just wanted to ask on, as written prior to September 1st, how would, how would this work, assuming that we, we pass this first reading this time, second reading in July, would, would, would we be asking them to, to come up with, with this response prior to September 1st, or would that, do you know how, how that would work operationally?
Dr. Lena, I can answer that. Operational, my, operationally, my reading of this will be that the board will set the parameters, and then the feedback will come after that point, and just really as information to give the calendar committee. If the board's looking for something different, then-
Okay. Jay, to answer your question?
Yeah.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, I see none. If you'd go ahead then with, Dr. Looney, your recommendation?
I do recommend approval of this change, approval of this change as first reading.
Thank you. Go ahead and record your votes.
Your vote is nine yes, zero no.
Thank you. The next one is board policy first reading, 3.211 project planning. Anyone like to make a motion on this one?
Would you approve?
We have a motion for approval. Mr. Wimberley, second by Ms. Emerson. Thank you. Any discussion on this one? Okay, I see none. Dr. Looney, your recommendation?
Recommend approval.
Okay, if you go ahead and record your votes then, please.
Your vote is nine yes, zero no.
Thank you. The next one is board policy first reading, 4.804, The Study of Religious Holiday. I'd like to make a motion for this one. Motion for approval for Mr. Hullett? Second by Mr. Wimberley. Anyone like to make a comment on this one? Mr. Gregory?
I'll just clarify, it's now the religious content of courses. But you read it out as the study of religious holidays.
Yes, I read what was on our agenda, and that we're looking at this as a first reading. We know there's going to be some changes to this policy.
Okay, thanks.
Dr. Burgos?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to clarify why I will be voting no on this tonight. It's because in its first reading, I do not like it, but I know we'll have a second reading, so just wanted to clarify, it needs to be, I believe, made into two policies, one regarding curriculum, and then the other one regarding the holidays that this policy was taken from.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I see none. Dr. Looney, your recommendation?
Recommend approval.
Okay, if everyone go ahead and record your votes then, please.
Your vote is seven yes, two no.
All right, that motion passes then. The next one is board policy first reading, 5.1031 teacher assistance. I'd like to make a motion. Motion for approval from Dr. Burgos, second by Mr. Cash. Any comments or questions on this one? Okay, I see none. Dr. Looney, your recommendation?
Recommend approval.
Thank you. Board, if you go ahead and record your votes then, please.
Your vote is nine yes, zero no.
Thank you. The next one is board policy on first reading, 6.3032 on bullying. Anyone like to make a motion for this one? Motion for Mr. Hullett. Any second? Second by Ms. McGraw. Any discussions, comments, questions on this one? Okay, I see none. Dr. Looney, your recommendation?
I do recommend approval.
If you'd record your votes, please.
Your vote is nine yes, zero no.
Thank you, board. The next one is request for exemption from compulsory attendance law. Anyone like to make a motion on this one? Motion for approval for Ms. Emerson, second by Mr. Cash. Any comments or questions on this one? I see none. Dr. Looney, your recommendation?
Recommend approval.
If you go ahead and record your votes, please.
Your vote is nine yes, zero no.
Thank you, board. The next item is classified pay rates. Dr. Looney?
Mr. Chairman, board members, I do recommend approval of these pay rates for the 2016-17 school year. With that being said, I do want to let you know that we are doing a comprehensive analysis of classified pay, and that will be available to the board for the next physical year, so we'll be bringing that to you in November, but this is for the upcoming year with planning, working towards a long-term solution this November.
Thank you, Dr. Looney. Would anyone like to make a motion for this item on classified pay rates? Motion for Ms. Emerson. Anyone like to second that? Second by Dr. Burgos. Any questions or comments? Okay, I see none. This is your recommendation, Dr. Looney?
Yes, sir.
All right, board, if you'd go ahead and record your votes on this one?
Your vote is nine yes, zero no.
Thank you, board. Next item is the 2015-16 School Board Budget Amendments. The first one is intra-category budget transfer general purpose school fund amendment. Dr. Looney?
Mr. Chairman, board members, I do recommend approval of this budget amendment.
Anyone like to make a motion on this first one? Motion for Mr. Hullett. Anyone like to second? Anyone like to second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wimberly. Any discussion, comments, questions? Okay, I see none. This is the Superintendent's recommendation, so if you go ahead and record your votes, please.
Your vote is nine yes, zero no.
Thank you. The second one is Intra-C category Budget Transfer Central Cafeteria Fund Amendment. Dr. Luna.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, this represents $102,446 budget amendment in the cafeteria program. I do recommend approval.
Anyone like to make a motion for this one?
Would move.
Motion by Mr. Hullett? Anyone like to second it?
Second.
Mr. Wimberly is the second. Any questions or comments on this one? Okay, I see none. This is the Director's recommendation. If you go ahead and record your votes.
Your vote is nine yes, zero no.
Thank you. The next one is Intra-C category Budget Transfer Extended School Program Fund Amendment. Dr. Luna.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board Members. Just as a reminder, this is a self-sustaining fund paid for by parent fees. This is to make sure that all of the end-of-the-year accounting line items match up. This is for $286,000. I do recommend approval.
Anyone like to make a motion on this one? Motion for approval for Mr. Cash.
Second.
Second by Ms. Emerson. Any comments, questions on this one? Okay, I see none. This is the Superintendent's recommendation. If you'd go ahead and record your votes, please.
Your vote is nine yes, zero no.
Thank you, Board. The next one is the Central Cafeteria Fund Budget Amendment. Dr. Luna.
Mr. Chairman, I do recommend approval. This is for USDA commodities of $56,885.
Okay, anyone like to make a motion on this one?
Would move.
Motion by Mr. Hullett? Anyone like to second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wimberly. Any comments, questions? Okay, I see none. This is the Superintendent's recommendation. If you'd go ahead and record your votes.
Your vote is nine yes, zero no.
Thank you. The next item is 2016-2017 Lease Purchase Agreement Resolution with Apple and Dell for Computers. Dr. Luna.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, this is a little bit of an unusual situation. We typically purchase items like this outright. However, the CTE Department has a need to purchase some particular equipment that was some specific capabilities for the CTE programming, digital arts, and engineering programs. And therefore, we are asking to enter an agreement with this vendor for those types of tools. I do recommend approval.
I'd like to make a motion for this one. Ms. Emerson? Second by Mr. Cash. Any further comments, questions, discussion? Mr. Wimberly.
Dr. Luna, could you explain the impact on our budget by doing it this way?
We're spreading the cost of the total amount, $659,479.36, over a multiple-year period. We will actually own the devices at the end of the term. So, essentially, we're financing it over time based on our rules and regulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Galbraith.
So, I guess my question is, it says with a yearly commitment of $168,000, if approved in subsequent budgets, so we're pretty much obligating ourselves for three years. I guess, is that just, is that technical language that needs to be in there? I don't know that we're...
Yes, sir, it is. Of course, we do have an "out" provision, that is, that funds are not available.
Okay.
So, we do, but it's either buy the equipment upfront for the $659,000 or pay for it in three installments.
Okay. Mr. Cash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say our CTE Director, Dave Allen, is expanding these programs left and right, and these are just some of the costs that we're going to have to incur to continue with a great CTE program. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I'd like to stand corrected. I heard Jason whispering. It's a four-year commitment rather than a three, so I apologize.
Thank you. Okay, we have, I believe we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
All right, we're ready. Any other comments or questions? Okay, this is the Superintendent's recommendation. Then if you'd go ahead and record your votes on this one?
Your vote is nine yes, zero no.
Okay, thank you, Board. The next item is the Superintendent's Evaluation. Would anyone like to make a motion on this evaluation?
Some move.
We have a motion for Mr. Hullett. Anyone like to second this? Mr. Cash seconds. Okay, Mr. Hullett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In keeping with the discussion at last week's board work session, I move that we amend the WCS Superintendent Evaluation Survey previously adopted on July 20th, 2015 by reducing the survey respondents to WCS board members, WCS senior staff, and building principals.
So, that is the motion that you're making on doing this. So, Mr. Golden, is this considered an amendment to, or is this the original motion?
Well, there was no, so moved was the comment, but it was not clear what the actual motion was. So, Mr. Hullett's motion, as recently stated, is a motion. Under Robert's Rules of Order, that is a motion to amend something previously adopted. So, that would require, just to make sure, I think Mr. Cash was the one who seconded, just, I would want you to make sure that you had a second to the actual motion as stated.
Okay, so, Mr. Cash, what Mr. Hullett said was his original motion that he just stated? Are you in agreement with that to second that motion, which is an, okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Emerson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think in looking at the survey that was sent to us after the work session on Thursday, I did some reviewing of that particular document and found that, in fact, it is not the correct document that the committee voted to approve. And what it is, it's, there's some very similarities to it, but there's also some changes. So, the one that we, the committee voted on is right here in my hand. It was approved in June of 2015 by three of the four people that served on that committee, and that is the appropriate document that needs to be presented. This one is not the correct document.
Okay, I asked the staff to look into that. So, Mr. Golden, you did some looking?
Well, number one, the July Board Packet had the document that was approved, and it's possible another staff member's actually read through the details of that and compared it to what you're articulating. But the document that was approved was the document that was in the July Board Packet. So, this amendment, as stated, would be amending that particular document. As I'm sitting here, I can't tell you which one of those two documents was in that July Board Packet. Somebody else may have an answer to that.
I can tell you that the reason for that was, is that I was delayed in getting to that particular meeting. I was coming in from out of town. Because of storms, I was not able to get back in time, and the one that was submitted was the one that we had not accepted, but that Mr. Hullett had with him, and that's the one that went on. This is the correct document, and this is the one that needs to be sent out, not this one.
Okay, so procedurally...
Tell me what to do.
Well, yeah, procedurally, because the Board did approve that document that is in that Board Packet, if you'd like to submit another document, you'd have the opportunity to amend the motion that's on the floor to replace it with that document, or replace it with that document with a reduced number of respondents along lines of Mr. Hullett's. So, you have the floor right now. If that's what you wish to do, you do have the power to do that.
That's what I wish to do, to make an amendment. Will include the top three on this particular category, but the document that needs to be surveyed with the people that will be doing the document is this one that was approved.
Okay, the one that was approved at our July meeting, my understanding is the one that was in the packet for now? Okay, so that's the one that was approved, is the one that's in here now that we have?
The one, this one was not supposed to be in there. It, there were four people on that committee. Three of us did not approve of this one. We approved of this one. And there's not a lot, but this one, the scaling is off, some of the wording is incorrect, and this is the one that, you all haven't even seen it, I'm assuming.
Okay. Mr. Golden, if the Board approved the one that we have before us tonight, that is the official document we have to work from right now.
That's correct.
And then, Ms. Emerson, you're asking for us to amend it to what you have there that the Board hasn't seen?
If that's the correct protocol, Mr. Golden, then that's what I need to do.
That's, as motioned, yes, that's an option. There are a handful of other options procedurally, but if your intent is to replace the document that was approved in July with the document that you have, then you've made a proper motion. It would require a second and a vote. Mr. Chair, there's other options, which include laying on the table, postponing to a definite, to a definite time in the future. Again, there's a handful of possibilities here.
May I ask you, Mr. Golden, what you would recommend? I think it's important for everyone to see, and I would be certainly delighted if we all have an opportunity to look at the one that was, you all saw, in comparison to the one that was actually determined to be the one that we wanted to use. And I don't think it's going to be a harder contest, but it's, the criteria and the rating scale's different, some of the verbiage is a little bit different, it's a little bit clearer, and that was the one that the majority of the committee was delegated to do, and this is the one that we selected.
Ultimately, that's the will of the Board at this stage. If the Board passes something tonight with a change, the staff will, you know, will submit that survey electronically. If the Board delays, the staff will wait until the Board makes a decision. But I don't have any legal advice as to which route you take. Ultimately, that's a question for the, you know, for the Board, based on how much information you all need as a body to make a decision.
Okay, we have two other people who've requested to speak. Ms. Emerson, are you okay for right now?
Certainly.
If I may, Mr. Chair, there's not been a second.
Okay.
There's been a motion, but no second.
Okay. Did, all right, we'll go ahead and get a second on Ms. Emerson's proposal, then, amendment.
What is the amendment? To replace the...
The amendment is to replace the document with the one that we haven't seen as yet for this evening.
And to reduce the respondents per the, along the same lines as Mr. Hullett's motion.
Yes. I have a second, but I've seen it on the committee.
Okay, we have a second from Dr. Burgos. Okay, does anyone want to speak to the amendment? I have up here that, Mr. Hullett, you wanted to speak, and I have Ms. McGraw. Did you want to speak to the amendment?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hullett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And respectfully to Ms. Emerson, that is not exactly the way this progressed and the way it was laid out. She sent us the document that she's referring to, and we incorporated it into the version that we voted on, and we all saw it multiple times leading into the July meeting. We looked over it and looked over it. It also went into the contract discussions with Dr. Luna, so it had implications there as well. But the final document that we voted on was one that we all came to a very good place on, because we had moved, we had progressed through an entire document, and then at the last, at the 11th hour, we had another document presented to us, and we worked diligently to incorporate that document into what we ended up voting on in July of last year. That document is the one that everyone saw. It was the one that Dr. Luna agreed on, and it's the one that we should make the amendment on to reduce for tonight.
Thank you. Ms. McGraw?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know we can't make a motion at this time because we're just talking to the amendment, but I haven't seen this other document, and I think there's a lot of confusion around it, so I'm uncomfortable voting in a document that I don't think the entire Board has had time to review. So, if we get to the point where it's appropriate, I would feel very comfortable delaying this discussion till the next month.
Okay. Right now, we have a motion and a second for an amendment to a different document than what we have presently that we're voting on this evening. Is there any other discussion on the amendment? Mr. Cash?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do remember going over these documents and changing some of the language and whatnot. But what document was used for the evaluation last year?
It wasn't this document. This is a survey, evaluation survey. It's not the actual, the final evaluation of Dr. Luna. It's a gathering part of information for it.
That's what we're talking about. That's what we're talking about. So, which one was used last year?
We didn't use this at all last year.
Okay, all right.
It was different.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on this one? Okay, are we ready to vote on the amendment? Dr. Luna, would you like to weigh in on a recommendation, or would you rather?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, if you go ahead then and record your votes to, for the amendment. Does everyone understand the question?
I want to restate, let you state the amendment again, please.
Okay.
I just want to make sure we're all...
All right, the amendment, as I understand it, is to change the document that we have now to the document that Ms. Emerson said is the one that the Board should be using. Is that clear?
Right.
Okay, all right.
And, Mr. Chair, and reduce the number of respondents per Mr. Hullett's...
And reduce the number of respondents to school board members and senior staff and executive building principals, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, if you go ahead and record your votes.
Your vote is four yes, five no.
Okay, so the amendment motion fails. We're back to the original motion that Mr. Hullett presented. Is there any further comments? Dr. Burgos?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. There is some obvious confusion to this, and I think it's only fair that something that's as serious as this, that we should be able to speak clearly to it, and this is not a good forum. I would like to move that we, again, I'll look to you, Mr. Golden, is, do we table this for a month, or do we put this on to a special committee? We can reconvene the committee over this next month so that we can bring a clear picture back to this Board?
Well, from a Robert's Rules perspective, you could do one of three things.
Okay.
That I can think of off the top of my head, who knows? My Robert's Rules book is that thick. There may be some other options. You could table it, which means that it sits until the next meeting, and it pops back up, and it floats there until it comes back on. You could postpone to a definite time. That's another option. You could refer it back to a committee. But in any event, no matter which of these you do, you are, in essence, making a motion to amend an act that was previously adopted. So, substantively, that may be a question for the Chair as to which he would prefer. You as a Board, if you feel like there's value in the committee going back and discussing this again, you can certainly do that. I would suggest that if you're thinking about the committee discussing it, that the committee has some deadlines.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's been floating a long, a little too long already.
All right, then I move, Mr. Chairman, that we postpone this for one month to next month's meeting, and the interim, that this committee, that was convened, myself and Mr. Hullett and Ms. Emerson and Mr. Cash, will meet however many times necessary to make sure that we are in agreement, that we bring you... sure that we are in agreement that we bring you the document that we would propose to use for the superintendent's evaluation survey.
Okay, we, we all, the four that were on the original committee that Mr. Mezra set up?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, so you have made a, a motion to postpone it now?
For one month.
One month? Okay. Anyone want to second that?
I'll, I'll second that. I think that beats Terry Lee's longest motion ever, man.
[laughing]
Okay, we have a second from Mr. Gregory. Okay, so we have discussion on the, on this one, or is this one that goes with no discussion, based on your Roberts rules expertise?
If it's a motion to postpone to a definite time, it actually allows for debate. Motion to table does not.
Okay, so we can open up, I have in line to speak, Ms. Emerson, Mr. Hullett, and Mr. Galbraith. So, Ms. Emerson?
Thank you. I went back to the last year's meeting and did some research, and found that PJ Mezra at that time, on my behalf, because I wasn't able, said that, that, this would be revisited so that adjustments could be made. So I'm not, I just, this has been floating around for a long time, and it's time that we nail it down. I think, Dr. Looney, if you haven't seen it, I think you'll be pleasantly surprised, and one of the reasons that it, it's, I, I just think you'll be pleasantly surprised. It's easy, it's going to be user-friendly, and it, it, very simple. Also used a lot with TSBA, Mr. Hullett's original, so it's really a combination of two. I think it's just a simpler, easier-to-understand instrument. So, thank you. Thank you, Anne.
Mr. Hullett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the things that we did with the document that Ms. Emerson has, when we incorporated it into the final document that was voted on and approved by the board, was we took out some of the specificity of some of the terms that were not applicable to what we do, and made it more general, so it applied to the evaluation for what we could do for, for Dr. Looney. My question is, is we, we worked on this forever, it seems, last year, then we brought it to the board, we voted on it, we passed it, and now we're a year later, and we want to say, hang on, we want to do over. And we, we integrated all of the things that are in that, that are relevant, into the final form, which we voted on and passed, and we moved forward, and it was tied, it was coupled to Dr. Looney's contract discussions. So I think that that's, I, I think that there are several, you know, moving parts here that we don't want to go back and mess with.
Mr. Galbraith?
I forgot what I was going to say. I've been sitting here for a while. I, I guess I apologize for, for not being, being able to be there on the work session. I did, I did get up early and watch it. Thank you for having a relatively short meeting, so I didn't have to go too long or wake up too early. But I remember the, the, part of the discussion was that we were to, were to start this process, and had some relevance to, to when we were going to be evaluating, thus we were not going to wait till the, to, to interview all the, or to survey all the teachers and, and everything. It was just that sub, that shortened list. So I guess, how are we going to do that if we, if we delay a month? I, I mean, we're just pushing, we're pushing back. I mean, I thought the, I thought the whole purpose was we were going to get, get this out of the way before, otherwise, we're, we're kind of pushing into next year. So that's, I'm, I'm, I'm fine to, and, I mean, in all, in, in all truthfulness, in, we, we've agreed on this a year ago. I mean, I don't, I don't think the time to, to adjust a survey to, that's relevant to last year. I, I don't think it's appropriate to, to change it at the last minute, so I'm, I'm going to be voting to move forward as we've agreed upon.
Thank you. Dr. Burgos?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's happening here is there's a draft that's being put in that was not what the committee agreed upon, and it was really difficult, I remember even at the time last year in July when we voted on it, because of Ms. Emerson's flight delays, the final draft was not there in time, the one that the committee had agreed upon. And if you'll go back and look at that meeting, because I did, when I saw this one that was not provided to us for the work session, because the chairman did not have it, and Mr. Hullett brought it up last minute, so we did not have time to preview it. So when I previewed it in the email, just in anticipation of this meeting, it did not ring true to what I recalled. The wording was different, in the sense of, I remember having some of those discussions about how we should make it more relevant, and more simple, easier to use. And then I realized that that was the rough draft that Mr. Hullett had originally brought to the committee, and the committee weighed in and went, no, we need to tweak this some. And so I understand what Ms. Emerson's saying, that the, and Mr., excuse me, Chairman Mezra at the time even said in that meeting, and you can go back and watch it, because the archives show it, he recognized that what we voted on that evening was going to be tweaked, was his words, to what Ms. Emerson had in her possession. And since it was the survey, not the final evaluation tool, it's just one of the tools to get to the full evaluation of the superintendent, he felt that was okay, because it's just some questions that truly, this is just about how some questions are asked on that survey. So I think in respect for the amount of hours that Ms. Emerson put into that, and the amount of time that the committee spent revising Mr. Hullett's original rough draft, which is what basically you're looking at, I think it warrants one month, given the fact that we've already been putting a great deal of time into this in, in the past. So I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Ms. Emerson?
I, I was just about to, to say the same thing. PJ Mezra made a comment at that board meeting that said that that was not the final draft, that we were going to revisit this, and that's what I'm trying to do. And I realized that what I was sent this week was not what we agreed upon. I pulled out my notes, I went back and listened to the meetings that are, you, anybody can listen to them, June of 2015 and July of 2015, and it is clearly stated that there was more work that was going to be done and needed to be done. I appreciate very much your openness, Ms. McGraw, to the fact that you haven't even seen it, so you can't make a comparison. I just ask that the time be given and allocated. For those that are not familiar with what we were hoping would be simpler, easier to do and to read, and not as complex, that you would at least give it the time before you'd make your decision. Thank you.
Mr. Hullett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's go through a little root cause analysis. As the committee was formed, there were four of us originally, Mr. Cash, myself, Ms. Emerson, and Dr. Burgos. We began, and we had, I believe, two meetings that Dr. Burgos was unable to attend, and she ended up asking Mr. Mezra to be, to roll off the committee, because she was committed at work and other commitments and couldn't make it. And Mr. Mezra said that was fine. So the committee became Mr. Cash, Ms. Emerson, and myself. Mr. Cash, I led, I was the committee chair, if there was one, and I came up with the draft, the structure of the mechanism. And what ended up happening is, for the next six weeks or so, Mr. Cash and I primarily worked on it, and we went back and forth, back and forth, with no responses to emails other than his and my own. And at the last minute, we get to the last meeting where Mr. Mezra is there as well, and we're getting ready to approve it, and Ms. Burgos, or, sorry, Ms. Emerson walks in and drops this on us and says, no, here's what we're using. And Mr. Mezra was, had already seen it, we hadn't, Mr. Cash and I hadn't seen it, and suddenly that, and we were told, this is what we're using. And I said, well, hang on a second, and then we got into a very energetic discussion about the instrument itself and what we were doing with it. And then we decided, okay, we will go ahead and integrate that into it. We worked on it, we integrated it, we put it in, and then what we voted on, and what we did, was the culmination of all of those discussions. But what's, I, I don't doubt that Ms. Emerson put work into it, but she didn't deliver it until the final meeting right before we were supposed to vote on it. And Mr. Cash and I had been working on this consistently, going back and forth at least once or twice a week about it, the entire, throughout the entire process. So what we voted on, I just don't understand, we're a year later, and all of a sudden now we're just throwing our hands up and saying, no, no, we have to stop, we have to, why? Why, why didn't someone say at, at the July meeting, or the August meeting, or the September meeting, why didn't someone say, stop, we need to go back and do this? We voted on it, we were all happy with it, we moved forward. It is what it is.
Thank you. Ms. McGraw?
I would like to call the question.
Okay. Mr. Golden, the official Roberts rules?
Under the rules, if there's, if there's, the practical answer is if there's no objection, then you ask if they're ready to vote. If the answer is no, then you have a vote on the call for the question, a non-debatable vote.
Is there, I asked the question if there's, if there's any, if, if this is one that everybody, is there no dissension on calling the question? Is that, is that the question? They asked the question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is, is everyone willing to call the question, or is there dissension to not call the question at this time?
I, I would like to hear what Dan has to say.
Mark, I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I didn't have your mic on.
I, I dissent, if you will. I'd like to hear what Dan has to say.
Okay, I'm assuming that means there's...
Under Roberts rules, you have a vote on the call for the question, unless Ms. McGraw would like to delay her, or, or withdraw her, her motion for one speaker. But she can't really give him permission, she just has to withdraw and re, and resubmit it. I'm giving you your options.
If Mr. Cash would like to speak, I'll withdraw the call to question.
Okay, we have, Mr. Wimberly is first, and then we have Mr. Cash, or do we do it since it was specifically addressed to Mr. Cash?
Mr. Wimberly's next in line.
Okay, Mr. Wimberly?
May I ask a question before I ask a question? Does this mean that Mr. Cash can't speak?
If you call for the question, then you have a vote on the call for the question.
Pardon me?
If, if, were you, were you scheduled to call for the question? Is that what your, your intent?
No.
Okay, then, then there is, at this moment, there is no call for the question on the floor.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a moment of privilege? Yeah. But Dr. Looney would like to, would like to speak.
I'd just like to have a moment of privilege, board members. I, I honestly appreciate the debate. I want to, I want to offer you a word of encouragement. We can do better than this. Our teachers count on us to give them an appropriate evaluation and tell them what the parameters are up front. And I would just like for y'all to settle on something, and let's carry on. There's important work to do in this district. I absolutely agree that you should get feedback from our stakeholders. I don't believe, based on the number of board members that are here, that there's going to be universal consensus, but I, I'm just imploring you to, that let's figure out how to get to a consensus tonight and move on, because we have work to do.
Okay. Mr. Wimberly, thank you.
That was real close to what I had to say. I actually voted against the instrument back some time ago, and I don't have a strong opinion about what we do. I don't, before Dr. Looney spoke, I think I would have said, I don't see any harm in moving forward, but what he says makes sense to me, so perhaps we should work it out tonight. And I do look forward to hearing what Mr. Cash has to say.
Mr. Cash?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm listening to this whole conversation, and I understand both parties. And what Bobby said is, is, Mr. Hullett said is very true. We worked on this very hard, along with Ms. Emerson. And what Ms. Emerson is saying is also true, that there was a stipulation in there that we wanted to tweak the document, and it got away from us. But that document, what was, whatever was voted on, I feel at this point, Dr. Looney deserves an evaluation. And we need to be more prompt and do this stuff on time. We need it put in to the, our annual calendar, and not taken out for some other reason, but stay focused on this. I don't think there's anything more maddening to a leader when he, he doesn't know just how good of a job he's doing. And it's very important for people to speak out regardless of wording and whatnot and tweaking. Yes, we need to do that, we need to bring the committee together and do that and get it perfect. But in the meantime, our superintendent needs to be evaluated, and he needs to be evaluated on time. And I think that's where we should go at this point, is get this done and over with, and bring a committee back together, and look eye to eye, and have dialogue, and agree on it. That's all I have to say. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion to put it aside for now for a month, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so we would make a vote to either put it aside or to move forward on the original motion, is that correct?
Well, right now, you have an amendment to the motion that is pending, and so it will, it would amend that motion. You'd have to have a, so it, that would end the debate on this particular topic if it were to pass.
I can make it more simple. I can withdraw my motion.
Okay. Dr. Burgos, your mic was not on, if you'd like to...
I apologize.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, given what Mr. Cash said and what Dr. Looney said, it makes complete sense this year to move forward and be professional. We can tweak it next year. I withdraw my motion.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Burgos. We're back then to the original motion as stated by Mr. Hullett. Board members, do you want to hear it again, make sure? No, you all understand it? Okay, any further discussion on the original motion? Mr. Galbraith?
Sorry, I wanted to ask this a while ago. We got, we got kind of distracted, but, so we're, I know we're, we're limiting this for, for this period of time, but do, I guess, I'm, just want to make sure that the way we're, we're wording the, the motion is that we're just changing it for this year, and the document still stays as intact for, for next year. I don't know that that's necessarily the way that the motion read, but it, as long as it, as long as we're all in agreement, so.
Mr. Golden?
Mr. Chair, the decisions of the board were not related at all to the 2016-17 school year. So that's, that's, that's a, an issue that you all will have to address at a, at a subsequent time. The board also is to set goals, board goals, and, and superintendent goals at, at the beginning of each school year as well. So for this coming year, you will, you will have to address that.
Pull it a bit later.
That's correct.
That's fine.
Mr. Gregory?
I just want to make sure, Jason, maybe I missed something, but doesn't Candy have a motion to amend Bobby's motion? If, we, we did vote on that, why am I missing that?
There was a vote, there was a vote on that.
Okay, it's all running together here.
Okay, Mr. Golden, we, we talked about this the other night. Can you describe the process that will happen on this if this, if this motion passes? Because I know some people weren't here.
All right, the school administration through our, through our, through Belinda Moss, I'm trying to recall off the top of my head her exact title, but she's our instructional technology coordinator, something to that effect. She will, she will submit this survey electronically to the individuals that the board approves to be, to receive the, the survey. I can't give you an exact date, but she's already started contemplating and working on it based upon the discussion that the board had on Thursday night. You, as board members, the, the senior staff and principals can choose to respond, there's no, there's no obligation, but we will get those results to you as soon as they come in. She will pick a date administratively with, with a deadline for the response.
Okay, if everyone understands then the process if this does pass. Okay, if we're ready to vote on the original motion, Dr. Looney, do you want to weigh in on this one, or do you prefer not?
No, sir.
Okay, if you all go ahead and record your votes then.
Your vote is eight yes, one no.
Okay, that's the last item I have on our agenda, unless there was one added that I didn't get when I printed it. Is that it? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting is...
Could I thank all the administrators and school and district employees for being here tonight? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Looney. Meeting is adjourned. Meeting is adjourned.